It's four o'clock, I'll open a regular session of the town council. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, our first item of business today will be the swearing in of our other newly elected town council member. So Sharon, where do you stand? Repeat after me, please.
Please go over here so I'm not in the picture.
You ready? You can't smack them until after your.
After your.
Is that demeaning myself or them?
Okay, you ready? I Sharon Faulkner do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
You want me to repeat that?
Yes, I do, please.
You've given it shorter things. I Sharon Faulkner do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America, and the.
And the Constitution of the state of Oregon. And the laws thereof.
And the laws thereof.
And I will faithfully and honorably demean myself.
And I will faithfully and honorably conduct myself.
It's demean myself in this, if you would please.
Demean.
Myself in the office of the Lakeview Town Council.
Of my, myself in the office of Lakeview Town Council.
To which I have been elected to do the best of my abilities, so help me God.
To which I have been elected to, to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
You are duly sworn in. Well, in reference to what Mike talked about before, the oath does have demean in it, but it is, we're working on that to change, but the old English definition means.
I mean, I'm old and I've been.
And you're an English teacher, you knew that.
And I, I know it, I don't even know at the time that I was, even Shakespeare's not there.
It's not, okay. We'll be there next year.
Do you want me to sign this, or?
Yes, before you leave tonight, you need to sign that, and I do also.
The state of Oregon's sample oath now says, instead of demean, it does have discharge, which is, you know, a similar meaning, but as Mike brought it, probably more, more reflective of what our younger people today would understand is what we expected them to do at the office, to discharge the duties or perform the duties. So we'll work on getting that done differently for the other Brown.
Okay, we have no public hearing, so we'll go ahead and move into public comment. Go right ahead. State your name for the record, please.
Kevin Sturba. I was talking with a parent today, actually, and he brought to my attention that we don't have any place for kids to play basketball. No hoops that are really set up for a good basketball court. And I thought it'd be a good, I don't know, maybe a proposal that we could look into maybe later is the tennis court at the pool. There's two nets there, maybe, maybe taking one net down and putting up some hoops inside the tennis court.
Sounds like a reasonable suggestion that could be looked into.
Is there still a hoop at the, by the daily middle school?
There are lots of hoops, but it's not.
The ground got all tore up in that construction. So the ground is not.
And it's not still not set up for.
Yeah, it had.
Yeah, you can have a game on.
You can have it painted, sun.
Right.
Well, that one was never a very good.
And it'd be fenced in for the balls would be traveling everywhere. And I think it'd be a really good thing for the kids to have someplace to go.
What about the tennis courts by the school?
No, they're.
I see the tennis court.
They use more.
I don't ever, I haven't seen anybody up there for a year.
Right, so I see maybe we take one net down and put some hoops up, and after we do get a good turnout, then we can put some more hoops up.
That's a good suggestion, we'll, we'll check into it and see if it can be done.
Appreciate it.
I think that's a great idea, Kevin.
Frank, did you have something tonight?
My second day.
Did you have anything else, Frank?
Just glad to be back a minute or two.
Right, we, we miss your smiling face when you're not here. We really do. Okay, we'll go ahead and move into communications, comments, and informational items. I think there's. The letter. Mr. Anderson Engineering, and that's it. Any comments or about it? Okay. We'll go ahead and move down to the consent calendar, which consists of the January 13th regular session minutes. Any additions, corrections, or notes anybody would like to?
Mayor, I had some under my report. I attended the swearing in of all the new county officials, as well as myself, which was a little later than their record had been dismissed. But I also, in the PAC meeting, I don't think it needs to include in the swearing in, if it does, of all of the elected officials, that's what I had done. But in the PAC meeting is where I mentioned sheriff, the new sheriff, Mike Taylor, being the new PAC member as the sheriff of the county, and they welcomed him. I think that's where my reference to the new sheriff was.
Oh, okay. Duly noted? Okay, thank you, Mike. That being said, with the correction, I accept a motion to approve this.
I will approve the consent calendar with corrections.
Sharon, second?
I'll second it.
A motion is second to approve the consent calendar with corrections. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries unanimous. We'll move into the mayor council manager updates. First thing I'll go is I didn't attend any meetings or anything, so that part of it's pretty easy. The second thing is I'd like for all the counselors to review your, your liaison assignments, and if you'd like some time to, to look at these and maybe think about it, or want to do some changes, we could always reappoint these at the next meeting. There's not a, not a real rush to do this, and, and so, you know, I can do it either way. If you would like some time to review these, maybe change, suggest some changes, maybe even add something we should have a liaison with, or some group. But what's the council's preference? Would you like to put this off till the next meeting and review it a bit?
I just would say one thing, CCNF is Commission on Children's and Family, which is gone. It's. I, I go to UPIK, but their meetings are down to once every, in fact, they have one coming up on Thursday, or Wednesday, tomorrow, and it's been canceled for lack of interest in kids, I don't know. But if you want to change that to UPIK.
Well, mine says UPIK.
Mine says CCNF.
Well, it has UPIK at the bottom, but there's CCNF.
CCNF is eliminated.
UPIK is still, is on.
It's on there, but you, but CCNF is.
Is there a youth council?
Not that I know.
I mean, yeah.
Well, I think that was a pet project of Arlene's, and she really wanted to bring kids in, and, and we had a disagreement because, not that I wouldn't like to see, you know, students and, you know, teenagers or anybody, kids involved, but there was nothing for them to do. You know, if you're just going to say, we really want you to be on our group, and you get to sit through boring meetings twice a month. Yeah, I agree with you. There was no responsibilities, no program, no things that we ever.
As full grown adults, they'll have plenty of boring meetings.
Well, I, I think it would be a good experience, but, you know, we have to find something for them to do. It has to be worthwhile, or.
Okay, well, we'll.
You get the kids who want to put it on their resume so that they'll look good, but they're not going to do anything. And I disagree with that, too.
So those two need to be off, the CCF and youth council?
The what?
The CCF and youth council are not on board anymore, correct?
Right.
Anybody, we could go ahead, I mean, if it's, we could go ahead and discuss, if you want to go ahead and, and I'll just reappoint as they are, or would you still like some time to look? Mike, you happy with the assignments, or?
No, as I stated last year, I think that they need to alternate, but I didn't get any response from.
The which?
I think that the assignments need to alternate so that we can all have a better understanding of what's going on in our community. And I asked for that last year, but it seems as though we're taking same track this year. I, I don't really function much as, as a liaison to much of anything, really. And I hate to discount the PAC committee meetings, but I don't vote in that. And I know that most of the other counselors get to vote in some of the things that they're involved in. Let's go ahead, I don't vote in that. I'm really not even accepted as a member per se. So, you know, I, I really haven't had many assignments since I've been on here for six years now. And I, I think that there needs to be a reshuffling, just as I said before, but.
Well, would you guys like to have a work session?
Does anybody vote?
I, I think we're all ad hoc, I don't believe it, but.
I have a liaison.
I have no vote in any of mine.
I don't like to vote on. Not on the liaison things, you don't vote on any of them, but what, what do you think you would like to do?
Well, for one thing, Sandy, I think, you know, the PAC, and I, I'm not trying to discount that, but somebody with, you know, I think that the expertise or the experience that our counselors have in each of the fields and facets that they're involved in should, should be taken into consideration. The field of work that they've taken into consideration, we could probably get a little further. You know, I'm, I'm on economic development, we're really kind of left out because the county economic development is the county's, and not all that much like yours. And I'm sorry to say that, but I've sat back for six years and noticed it, and even before that time period, and that was my disgruntlement when I came to the council. I wanted to do something different. I've not seen a difference in our Chamber of Commerce. I see our economic development plummeting. I think different assignments need to be made where the expertise of our counselors are looked at. When I signed on, I gave you my resume, I told you the field of experiences that I have. I, I went to that as kind of a negotiator and understanding 911. That's been something that's been wayward, gone, thank God, for a long time. But it was a big problem for the council, and, you know, those kind of things, I negotiated in different instances. And I, not that I'm a good negotiator, but it does feed my peace of mind. And I will let people know what is good for the town. And I, I just think that there are ways that our council can act a lot better and help our community in a lot of ways. And I think we're suffering a big time in the economic development of our community, and it just keeps plummeting. And to hear our new economic development director here in Lake County say that we'll be doing good to hang onto what we've got, I think we need to be thriving for far better than that, so.
Well, that, hearing that, how about July? Everybody, study these, let's, let's have a work session, kind of make your own list. We can take, give us 30 minutes prior to the next council meeting to discuss this, hash it back and forth, and at the end of that, then I'll make some liaison appointments at the next meeting. Or, or later on, if we don't get something settled in the work session. But I would, I will schedule a 30-minute work session to hash this back and forth. How's that?
I appreciate your consideration.
The other thing?
I appreciate your consideration.
On mine, it has the Bullard Canyon Advisory, which is also no longer in existence.
And I didn't finish.
Have no longer have money to do at Bullard Canyon.
I didn't finish what I was saying, and I'm sorry. I get lost on different things and get, get to going off. But what I mentioned Sandy's name for is I think the prison advisory committee is very fitting for Sandy in the line of work that she comes from. Her experience would be very valuable to those people trying to keep her citizen. And, you know, to where we don't have repeat offenders, because she was very involved in that line of work. I think there's certain things that each of, you know, in the, in the health profession, in the teaching profession, you know, there's, there's a lot of things that our council, you, you have a lot of expertise in a lot of fields. That's all I'm saying.
Well, along those lines, you know, not only look at these committees, but it's been a long time since we've looked at everybody's resume. List your strengths, spout them off at the, at our work session, you know, what, what they are, what your preferences may be, and we can hash it over. But we'll do that as a, as a council at the next meeting, so.
For sure.
Okay, excellent. Let's see, what else? I had that, and that. I would like to, this time, make an appointment. I had a volunteer come in, I interviewed him, we talked it over. At this time, I'd like to appoint Ray Turner to our budget committee, new member. And it still leaves me one person short, and that's on the planning commission. And I've got everybody I can think of looking for somebody. I know just one of, of body. The planning commission is probably the most, well, I wouldn't even say that. It is a very important committee, and we need somebody that'll get in. It does take work, it does take research, it does take, I don't know if you have to have a knowledge of building trade, but you have to be able to understand, understand that. So I'm not just looking for a body to throw in there. You know, I want somebody that, that is committed to the, to the planning commission, that's committed to the town, and will put some extra hours in. We've got a, a budget, we can send them to, to some schooling, you can get it. I know they have one-day classes in Bend and Clements, so if you come up with a name or somebody that might be interested, shoot their name to me or have them contact me. But we do need a good person for the planning commission, so. And they've moved us, appointing the council president, which I was lax in on doing last meeting, but that's under new business, so that's all I have. Sandy, do you have anything?
Well, the only thing I have is the meeting you and Ray and I had with Bob Gale concerning our recent audit things, which is required once a year, so.
That was pretty informative, and, and actually, we, I don't think we had any major problems, but we do have some things that we have to work on as a council.
Yes.
As the town, at least.
As the town, at least. Yeah, right. Sharon?
Well, I was going to UPIK tomorrow, or, but it's been canceled. And there is a league game tonight, basketball. We're playing Cascade Christians and, Christians and, but they have lost this year, so maybe there's hope. Our girls are doing really well, and our boys are struggling, but our girls are doing real well.
Good. Michael? Nothing?
Nothing.
Okay. We'll go ahead and move, well, have no old business. We'll move into new business, and the first item is to elect a council president. And as the council should all know, the president, council president takes the mayor's place in meetings when I cannot be present.
And if you do a motion, I would think that we would be very well served by our present president. I would make that motion.
I'll second.
I did ask, or we did ask her, and she, she is. So she would be happy to accept it, I guess, right, Sandy?
I will accept.
Having.
You want to vote formally?
Do I need to vote, or do we just?
No, you can second.
We have, we have a.
You have to all second.
Yeah, and then we have to close nominations. May I close nominations?
The nominations are.
Okay.
Quit confusing me. Just to make this nice follow-up, we have a motion in a second to elect Sandy Winsell as the council president for the new year. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, post. Congratulations, Mrs. Winsell.
Thank you. Is there cake afterward?
Cake and coffee at Sandy's house. Not true. Let's see, our next item. Is, it says approve the budget calendar for 2015. Actually, before we can approve that, we, we need to review it. So I'd like to change the wording on that, let's review the budget calendar. And I do know at least one mistake on it. What was the mistake I told you yesterday?
Well, the mistake was that it says approve budget calendar on February 10th on the calendar itself, and yet I added on your budget.
To approve it tonight.
To approve it tonight.
So we can either change that date and approve it tonight, or review it tonight and we'll approve it on February 10th, which.
Well, how much work is it going to be to run all this off again and change?
Well, that's the whole thing, we could just pencil that in and change that February 10th to, what is today?
January 27th.
27. I just, I want to point out, well, first, the calendar is pretty much just the same as what last year, just moved by one day for the most part because that's the way the calendar works for publications and all the things we did. The only thing that's kind of unique about this one, and we've yet, in the years I've been here, never had a need to have a fourth budget committee meeting, but if we were to get to the point of needing a fourth budget committee meeting, it would be the day following your third one. So in order to meet the requirements for your budget hearing and so forth, we would have to have it that close together. Either that, or I can redo the whole schedule and move it all a week the other way so that we could have a week between meetings.
We freshen our minds one day later.
And like I said, I think we usually are done in two meetings, and we have, I think, twice had a third meeting, a short third meeting. So I, I don't see things coming along this year that's going to require it to go to four meetings.
In 12 years, I've been to the fourth meeting once.
So I just want to make sure.
Is that how long we've been here?
I know. Is satisfactory with the council delay the, the way it is? Well, it's.
And mark the approval today, I mean, our vote on the approval today?
Pardon?
With the vote on the approval today, rather than February 10th or?
Yeah, it was just change the approval, the budget schedule to today's date. And with that being changed, I'd accept a motion to approve the budget calendar.
I move that we approve the town of Lakeview, Lakeview budget calendar for 2015 to 2016.
With correction.
With correction.
Sharon, second?
I'll second, Dr..
Yeah, a motion in a second to approve the budget calendar for 2015, 2016 with the one correction. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, post. Motion carries unanimous. And our last item is the resolution number 874 in the matter of Lakeview Town Council approving a well lease extension with the Utley Family Trust. You have any comments on that, Raymond?
You know, you can tell from the first four hours, we've been doing this since 2008. This is the well out near the greenhouse that we have a water right on, but there's a dispute about the ownership of the, of the, there's a, there's a dispute about ownership of the property, I guess, and the access to it. And it's working its way through court, and, and. So this well is intended to be primarily a backup well to the DOC well. It's a, we have 300 gallon a minute water right at the DOC well, and this will be a backup supply for that should that well fail. The idea is that we would be able to plumb this in and be able to move on with heating the prison with, with an alternative resource out at that location. So as we continue to work through the legal issues, we need to continue to keep the well under lease so that we can move forward with the rest of the procedure.
It was my understanding that that well is also able to supply more than just the Department of Corrections, could possibly enhance the community's efforts and endeavors in the future.
That's right. We actually have been granted a 500 gallon a minute water right on the well, and the well likely has larger resource than that. So the extra 200 gallons a minute more than the prison well is, is currently certificate for would be additional resource that we could potentially bring it into town. If you recall, when we first started out on the very well and the geopunnel heating process, our intentions were to bring that well in to Lakeview because it really is hotter and a possibly better resource, but we ran into environmental issues with a couple of businesses and individuals in the community that made that process begin to take so long that we were going to lose opportunity for funding that we had available for us. So we went to very well to do that. So, you know, still in the long term, you know, the long vision, you know, I'd say the 10-year vision, maybe, I don't know how long it is, would be to bring this in to not only back up the DOC well, but also be able to bring it into Lakeview so you have redundancy for the school and hospital facilities, as well as between the two systems, there's a lot of additional capacity to heat other.
Expend everything.
Other properties, other buildings, facilities going here. That long-term plan has, has kind of gotten stopped because of having to deal with the legal issues first, but we'll continue to work on it.
Mike, my only question is, you mentioned that there's the, and I realize most of it's to do with, well, I didn't realize it was property. I thought it was mostly to do with water rights on the, on the mineral end of it with the state. But while we're ticking along and we continue to pay a lease for the rights to have this water if we should ever need it, are we having to spend money to get through this litigation process? Or this, how much has the town spent so far on this since we're not getting any value? I know we've got, it's a reserve and we should have that. And I talked to Darrell Anderson about it, and, and he's assured me we have some backup. And I know he's speaking of that well and perhaps other things that we could turn to. But if we're having to pay along the way to lease something that.
But you don't really have to answer that.
I guess, I, I just want to say, you know, I'm, I'm thinking about, where, how much of this discussion should we have in a public session?
Okay, okay, I understand that.
End of executive session because of the litigation that's currently ongoing, so. So I guess I.
I understand that, I'm sorry. I think it's something we should all consider.
Would you like to go into, schedule an executive session to discuss, so you know a little bit more?
I certainly don't want to give up our lease rights. I'm not saying that, but I'm saying at the same time, perhaps we should holler before we sign a new lease and say, you know, we've been having to spend some, some fees along the way, and we're not getting any benefit out of this right now. So I'm not so sure we should continue to pump out this money.
What's our timeline on signing a new contract with the, with the?
We need, our agreement currently has expired. It expired last July, and we've discovered, again, through the processes that we're working through, that, that it has expired, although we paid, we have paid the lease payment through June of 2015. So we're, we're current on our lease payments. The document is out of date. And so we need the document to be updated so that it's current for the litigation that we're working on, so that there's not, doesn't, doesn't the appearance of a lapse, there's no intention for there to be a lapse.
So, so we could schedule a work, an executive session at our next meeting, discuss the information that Mike's asking for, and, and then come out of that if satisfactory and sign this lease? We're, we have plenty of time to do that.
That would be okay. It needs to be, it would need to be done at the next meeting. That's the.
And the latest, yeah.
I don't need to jeopardize it by any means, but I just, I feel that, you know, if you're dealing with an entity that, that is, is providing you a lease for certain aspects, and, and you're having to pay along the way for legal or litigation in any way or form or fashion, and we can discuss that, but if so, maybe we should look at it and we can discuss that, but if so, maybe we should look at it a little closer before we enter it.
The lease agreement, I can't remember if this one has it or not, Mike, those things.
I saw one.
We, the original lease agreement that this extends had a provision in it that we would defend and hold, hold harmless the Utley Family Trust. And so we, although they are also involved in the litigation that's going on because of a separate issue, we are leasing, we are also defending our interest with regards to the lease property so far.
I think we should take a closer look at it then before we enter it into the same lease. Certainly do.
What did you say about dates?
We would need to do this at your meeting on the 20, on the, on the 10th of February.
Or before. It could be before, and it's a special session.
I think, well, I think that's, that's, the 10th will be fine.
Hold it up.
The 10th would be, I don't see why the 10th wouldn't be okay. I'll check with legal counsel and find out.
Would you get the ORS numbers from John, and we will schedule a executive session on the 10th? We've got an executive session, and we've got a work session.
Work session.
Okay.
And then you'll have a regular session.
And then we'll have a regular session.
And then we won't worry about not having anything to do on the liaison committee.
Okay, so we will table this until after our executive session. That's our last item on the agenda. Any other comments from the public council? No? That being said, I will withdraw the meeting at 4:30. Thank you all.